Then the question also needs to become, can we fill that space and utilize the whole space, you know, by either contracting out of county or some things like that to, because additional space is going to require additional staffing.
Correct.
So, I mean, it seems easy for me to say, I'll save us the $19,000, we'll take our space back, but there are additional costs we'll need to consider and potential revenue that we would need to pursue.
Do you need the 19 if we're just, if we know where we're headed?
That seems the way to go.
Yeah. Right?
Well, this is something we're going to have to handle with some.
Yeah.
Delc, see?
Yeah, that's the word. We want to be good partners.
Agreed.
Yeah, and we're not, I mean, I won't support anything that terminates the contract. We can have a conversation about not renewing it.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
Something that, yeah, respects the challenges those, those folks are facing.
It wasn't being used and the state desperately needed space at that exact time.
They were in a crisis situation, absolutely.
But to this day, by far and away, the hardest county board meeting I've ever been a part of.
Really?
Yes.
Where commissioners were crying and...
Yes.
Well, and that one guy was going to have us arrested, he retired right after that.
Yeah.
Who was that attorney that... You can remain nameless, it's okay.
It had to have been a difficult meeting.
Yeah. Very good.
And the last, if you want me just to wrap up real quick, the AFIS machine, there's money in the budget for a metal detector. We would like to just reallocate that money that's already there for the AFIS machine. It's going to help us communicate better with our partners. It's an automated fingerprint identification system, and it will help to speed up the admissions process a little bit. We've had a couple of issues with our computer and our touchscreen in our control room. They've done a really nice job of having plans in place to operate the facility with keys when that goes down. Most recently, it went down and they had a little bit more difficult time to get it back up. Somebody remoted in and still struggled a little bit, finally got it back up. It's just good practice to have a backup. So, and it's not that we would be tossing this one out, it would just be put a new one in and then do what we need to update that one. And then you, when that situation comes up, if it's going to be long-term, you can just plug and play and you're, you're back up and going again.
I really appreciate as well, on your report, Brad, the last page that gives me the summary of the expenses and the revenue for the whole department with your letter, that just helps me rather than having to look all over, so I appreciate you including that.
Any feedback you have, I'm more than welcome, this is my, I really like this.
The only thing I would maybe suggest you add to that would be FTEs. Like, show me the, you've got the total numbers and you've included FTEs above, but maybe just give me a line next time that shows the FTEs.
Yep, like the total?
Yeah.
So, the 11, so it'd be 41 in this case?
Yep.
Gotcha.
Very good. Brad, thank you.
Commissioners, I really appreciate it, thank you.
Nice to have a good Brad on your team.
Christie.
Are we just going down to page 43, Dennis?
This one is back to 19.
19, thank you.
No, I'm good.
Okay, so Christie, let's, let's talk about current year stuff.
I'm here to defend my thesis. I tend to write in paragraphs more, so sorry about that. We're currently good for budget, we're at 49.1% overall, but we're over on PEP because Webb Bancroft retired in September of 2023 instead of June of '24, as had been planned. So, there was an additional $37,513 that were over budget on PEP right now. I think it's part of my OCD nature to want all of the line items to be absolutely correct, you know? But we are over our budget right now for interpreters. In September of 2023, the judicial branch increased the amount that they were paying interpreters, and as a result, our office changed our contract with interpreters to make it equivalent. However, we do try to get the interpreters to bill only hourly. The Supreme Court allows a two-hour minimum, and so what we try to do is because we use interpreters so much, we try to get them to agree. Some of the interpreters have not agreed to that, though, some of the more rare interpreters like Karen and French and those kind of languages. But we are currently over budget for interpreters. We have money in the rest of our budget to cover that, but I just wanted to bring that up to all of you to let you know that next year I need to ask for more for interpreters. We're, we're not a whole lot over, but as of December, we spent about, you know, close to $1,000 more. So anyhow, it's something to keep an eye on.
Do you have a hard time getting interpreters if they don't have that two-hour?
Not as of yet. Some interpreters, some interpreters have insisted on the two-hour minimum, and so we can do that for the lesser-used languages. You know, when it's harder to find an interpreter, there might be only one or two in town that we can get, but for Spanish, we can go to somebody else then, you know? So, we've been able to make that work out. Expert witnesses, because we are keeping more major cases and because we have unfortunately more major cases over the last year, the expert witnesses are going to go up. We're on budget right now, but if we keep getting the anticipated bills coming in from the expert witnesses that we currently have for the major cases, we're going to go over budget. So, I'm just warning you, at some point, I need to, I might need to come in and ask for additional money. We are at the $18,607 now, so we haven't had any additional bills, but I anticipate some will be coming in. So, just to keep a, keep you notified on that. The next couple requests deal with us being, we will be fully staffed as of May, and so we've saved a little bit because we've been down one attorney, a full attorney since November when Chelsea Crowell, in our office, left to go to Sarpy County in the public defender's office. But we'll be hiring someone to take her place as Attorney One. Chelsea was an attorney two. So, I am asking the county board now to give the step increase for Will Harris and Dave Terrell that I'd requested back in October. So, I'd asked the, the board to reclassify them to that. I also talked to HR about increasing Rebecca Minders. I didn't put her name in my report, but that's who I was anticipating the increase would apply to. Rebecca Minders, our social worker, to increase her to E17, she's currently in E16 or E18. And then Joe Renteria, our very senior investigator, because of his supervisory duties for the interns that we have, we work closely with the university, and typically, the investigators in our office have quite a few unpaid interns, and we have ended up hiring some of those interns later as attorneys, and so it's a very useful process to have kids from the university come in. They get college credits for that, and he has been in the office and has been involved with the interns, and he also now supervises another investigator. We've had another investigator for quite a while, but that's part of his duties, and it felt like the appropriate time to ask for that as well. I could be wrong. Is there typically, I didn't put the numbers in here, I think there's usually a $3,000 per year gap or thereabouts when you do that kind of increase. Does that sound... Yeah, yeah. So, that would be what I'd be looking at for the social worker, the investigator, and then Mr. Terrell and Mr. Harris. But those were the requests for that. There was a mistake in the Attorney Two classification raises. I, that's my paragraph that starts with regularly scheduled raises. Jimmy Seben in our office was due in August for an evaluation. HR usually notifies us, but Jimmy wasn't on that notification list in August. Jimmy's not a pushy person, and we all forgot about it, and he did not end up getting evaluated until January, and so he would have been increased to an Attorney Two. So, he would have been eligible in August for that Attorney Two increase, and so that would be about an additional $2,771. And I was so proud of myself, I got under budget $61.23 for the raises to the Attorney Twos, but then that oversight made that not under budget, so anyhow. That's for this year. Also for this year is my big, long paragraph on our case management mess. When I talked to Bill Udell from Don't Panic Labs, the price he gave me that it would cost to write a case management system for us was $1 million, which is just untenable. And so, we have been looking at a variety of other case management systems. Mostly, they have been subscription-type services, and they are looking at right now from $80,000 to $100,000 per year, but we are still looking. We're trying to find out whether or not we want to go with defender data and get the upgrade that was proposed, you know, a year, year and a half ago, or if we want to look at a completely different system that would be better able to deal with the body camera footage, to be better able to deal with internal emails. Right now, we can't save our emails, they don't, we have to save them separately, they don't automatically transfer. If you send an email out in a case, you have to send that out in your email system and then put it in the computer system. The systems that we're looking at would also allow us to give notifications to client through our case management system of their court dates. We can't do that now, you have to send out a separate email to somebody. But this would just put in updates, like their court date would be put in the computer system, and then they would get on, the push notifications would go out for clients. That might decrease the number of failures to appear, that might decrease the number of warrants out for people, the time that sheriffs have to do, and trying to seek people out on warrants and all of that. So, that's kind of what we're looking at, but I don't have a lot of details for you right now because we have been in the process of trying to vet out all these different systems with IS. I do not know right now whether or not us taking on a separate case management system would decrease our IS bills. I don't have an answer back on that yet. So, I asked Dennis about that, too, he didn't know, and we've been trying to look into that. Did you hear anything else?
I, I haven't, but Abby, do you have any ideas or thoughts about this case management system? Because, because I'd also be interested from both of you, maybe, kind of like on a time, what kind of timeline are we talking about here?
Sure.
You know, are we talking the next fiscal year because we're already in February, or what, so?
Some of the places have talked about, I don't know, like, it would take them four to six months if we signed the contract with them right away. They'd have to put all, they pull all of our current data into their system, and then it would, that's about the amount of time that I got. Is that what you got?
Yeah, so that would be for more of a subscription system, but that means that we basically cut the overhead down. So, I had actually written, sorry, I think it was back in March of last year, we had talked about kind of this risk assessment of the Justice Works proposal. There are a lot of things in here that were kind of, I guess, we needed more answers. So, because that original proposal said about, I think it was 806 hours for a full custom development system, that to me just sounded very low. We talked to Don't Panic Labs, went through a process with our project manager internally, and I think when she was going through it, we very clearly figured out that this is more of like a 3,500-hour endeavor to build that system. Because of that, I think that's where we want to look at more of these low overhead models that give you what you want, but also go buy more, rather than paying for the server infrastructure, the development, you're paying for, this is how many attorneys we have accessing the system, here's the price per seat. I think that range is probably in the $35,000 range to probably that $80,000 range, but we're going through that process now. As for the IS costs on the server, the one challenge that we have as a, as an organization is actually a good challenge, we have upgraded that infrastructure over the last four years. What that means is we went from roughly 200 servers to about 532 servers. This is the project that we did through ARPA. This is what it took for us to get all of our folks into Office 365 and to get everybody working remotely during the pandemic. We're now looking at that rather than me saying, Christie, here's your bill for how many CPUs you use, like the state does. We walked away from that model and said, let's go buy just an allocation model. Here's the pool of what it costs for us to run these servers based on that multi-year deal, and then let's, let's push out to departments accordingly. So, there will still be server costs. If we need to itemize that out, we can, but we would want to be looking specifically at the amount of data we're talking about. Until we know exactly what system we're going to and what data needs to be retained, that's a question that, that we still need to answer.
And my office has a meeting with another attorney's, another public defender's office in, on Monday about looking at their defender data, because they've not been all that happy with it. So, I don't really want to say that defender data would be our main choice, but we may be forced to look back at that again, but in which event, you know, we'll update the county board. I just wanted to let you know. But our, our system with the new upgrade in Windows 11, I think it is, some of our defender data stuff is just not going to work, so one person has not been able to upgrade to his new computer because Windows 11 would not work on it, or defender data wouldn't work on the Windows 11. So, anyway, that's what we're looking at, so.
I'm supportive of the reclassifications as we've talked about.
Thank you.
That's got a big thumbs up for me. Doesn't sound like we need to make any decisions right now on the, on the IT system.
Nope, nope, I just wanted to keep you updated.
A heads up of the thing coming up.
Yes, it's common, yeah, yeah.
Roll those reclassifications over to a Tuesday?
The only ones that are out of control.
Well, the ones that we have control of.
So, I should come back Tuesday? Or are they okay now?
I will place the attorney ones on Tuesday just...
Already? Okay.
And what do we need to do for James Seben?
I think...
Has he been made home?
No.
Will he be part of that, or what do we need to do?
He's not being reclassified.
Yeah, his evaluation just took place later, and so I just wanted to keep you notified that my Attorney Two raises were not $66 under budget.
Has become an Attorney Two, that's a notice.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else? All righty, thanks.
We'll hop over to the clerk of the district court.
Thank you. Questions, that. Our basic increase, questions on salaries, the $31,200, taking into consideration of, you know, just the percentage increases for the, this is, accounts for 23 employees in our office, come out to like $34,647, which is the annual percentage increases. So, we're asking less than what was in that amount when you time took the basic salary plus FICA and the pension amounts that it increased on there. The insurance increase of 11.3, Dennis had on his note to be about 16.3. The difference is, we have three individuals, it's in his numbers, that's not part of the 621 budget, it's out of our, that 627 and 751 budget, we have individuals assigned in our office, so it kind of splits that out.
All the additional appropriations are things we did, basically.
Right. The second portion on here is, we have a position, it's Accounting Operations Manager for the Clerk of the District Court. Troy had been working on this project to increase from a C15 to a C21. He's been working on this here for three years, for over three years. The position itself requires more specific knowledge and responsibility than that of the Administrative Services Officer. The closest position that Troy was able to find and work with personnel was the Lancaster County Accounting Operations Manager in the County Clerk's Office, which is a C21. And so, that's what they kind of use as a lateral. They've been working closely with personnel, and personnel is on board with us on this, on the reclassification. They advised us they couldn't upgrade it without the county board's approval, so we're asking that the reclassification be approved for immediate, the position be reclassified for immediate reclassification, C21, C15 to C21.
I don't remember this either.
Troy talked about a little bit at his, at his budget hearing, he did.
And attached to the, our submission was Troy's letter that he went into more detail as to his justification for the reclassification.
Pretty big increase.
15 to 21.
And that's all, 15 to 21 is a $31,000 increase? Am I understanding that correct?
Nicole's nodding her head. Nicole, do we need to have you...
But it's, I mean, so moving from C15 to C21 is a $31,000 increase?
No. Fairward the employees that now to the maximum of the C21, I think that's helpful.
Oh, so Matt, you're looking at that $31,200?
Yeah.
That, that also includes the cost of livings for the other employees.
Okay.
So, so that C15 to C21 is attached within that 31, too.
Okay.
That's helpful.
And if it goes straight across from the step eight to step eight, that's about a $10,000 increase.
Okay.
Cost of living is about 21, did everybody else have been $1,000-ish?
Right, it's, it's all the steps up from...
I mean, I don't know.
Here's, here's what I would recommend, let's, let's hold right now on the step change, and let's put it on a Thursday shortly to have a longer discussion about it, and let's, let's give a thumbs up to the rest of the cost of living increases. We're not saying no on it, but let's just, because I don't, I don't remember hearing about this, and I'd like to have some more conversation.
Yeah, and, and what I've got in there in that budget increase, you know, the $31,000 would include already that, that's the increase from 15 to 21 would be part of that $31,000.
I get that, I'm saying the cost of living stuff is fine, it's the 21-ish, and the charge stuff is fine, if that makes sense. Let's, let's come back and talk about this one again.
Well, especially, I mean, we just have a leadership change happening in this office right now, so let's, I kind of like that idea of let's hold off, let's figure out what that next step is, and then we can have a, then we can reconsider that.
I'm not necessarily against it, but I just want to, as things move forward, let's, let's, let's wait on that one just for a little bit.
I, I, I tend to agree, and I remember Troy specifically talking about, a lot of people in that office, he feels like me, have, doing different parts of job than they, than they were originally hired for, and I think that's true across the whole county, so I'm definitely supportive, I'd agree with what Sean said, let's just...
Okay.
Other questions?
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
So, we'll have Lynn come up. Okay, Lynn, so let's, let's talk about where we're at in this current year's budget.
Okay. First of all, I just want to introduce myself. I've not appeared before any of you, this will be my first time, so I'm Lynn Alvin, the new district court administrator, been in the role about two months, so I may not have all the answers you're looking for, but I did bring Judge Nelson with me to fill in the gaps if need be. So, when I looked through the budget numbers, I was projecting a shortfall of about $240,000. And, you know, a lot, a small portion of that is salary increases and the health insurance. Bills of exceptions and transcripts is higher than we anticipated, and that's just really unpredictable, depending how many big cases we have. I know one of the homicide cases that was paid in July was over $10,000 for one case, so those numbers add up very quickly with cases like that. The most unpredictable portion of that number is the legal services, and I was projecting a shortfall of about $200,000 on that area. We've used more than half the budget this first part of the year, but I'm anticipating that we won't have as many fees being billed in the second half. I think a lot of law firms try to clear out those ARs and bills at the end of the year, so I'm hoping that number comes down a little bit in the second half. So, that's where I was coming up with those numbers for the shortfall. I know it's going to be easy to point back to our rate increases for the court-appointed attorneys, and certainly that's a factor, but I also want you to keep in mind that the number of cases has increased. From 2002 to 2003, we had an additional, I think it was almost 500, it was 496 criminal cases filed in district court in one year, it was that big of an increase. And so, with that big of an increase, there's going to be additional conflicts with the public defender's office, so we're going to see more cases needing court-appointed attorneys on it. So, the fee increase has been very helpful. We are increasing the number on our court-appointed list, which has made it easier for the judges to find competent lawyers to appoint, which has been very helpful. What, quick number, from 2002, before we did that increase, we had seven attorneys on the felony one and homicide appointment list, and now we're at 19. So, that has been very helpful, just getting competent lawyers to that level of felony that we need, so. Brad, did you have other questions about that, or...
No, I, I, I mean, I don't think so. You know, the legal services, you know, you'll find out, you know, that number is, is all over the place at times, and some, some years we have good years, I guess, and some years we don't have quite as good years, so, so, yeah. So, I, I don't know that I've got anything else on that. I would just, Lynn, I'd go ahead and address your, your couple other items for future, for future, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, Lynn, I mean, and I don't know the answer here, but obviously, if cases rise, that, that means more hours, but is there any way to evaluate fair and reasonable charges in case like this? I mean, how do we know that the amount of hours we're being billed and paying for is appropriate to the case that's being represented?
When we receive the bills, they go to Simon in the clerk's office, and Simon goes through them with a fine-tooth comb and looks at what they're billing for a phone conference, is that reasonable? If he sees anything out of line, he goes back to the attorney and says, hey, this looks a little odd, is this correct? And he does find a lot of errors, he does, and has them fixed and rebuild, and then once he thinks it looks okay, those bills are submitted to the judge, and the judge also reviews those bills to see if anything looks out of line. So, it's kind of a two-step approval, just to make sure we're not paying for a four-hour telephone conference or something like that. So it's kind of a two-step approval, just to make sure we're not paying for a four-hour telephone conference or something like that.
I appreciate, and I'm not, you know, it's like one bad apple gives everybody a bad reputation. I realize most of these folks work very hard, but it's good to hear that there's two sets of professional eyes.
There's actually three, because the county attorney's office gets notice of it as well before it gets, before it gets submitted and reviewed. So there's actually three checks and balances.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Lynn, so address your, your couple other requests.
Yeah, we do want to put the request for you, before you again, to look at a new classification for a senior staff attorney. We currently have two staff attorneys working in District Court and they're both working at a very high level, excellent employees. The one that I want to focus on, he's been with the court a little over six years. His work is impeccable. He is top-notch and the judges rely on him a great deal. He's brought in on every, not every, because UTN does a number of them, but the high-profile cases, the complex civil cases that takes weeks to sort through evidence and research. Those are the kind of things that he's involved in. He's taken on a lot of extra duties in the last year. Being a consult for the court administrator, he's watching the legislature and the Supreme Court orders and making sure there isn't anything impacting what our judges have under advisement currently. And he's now assigning the work to, in his office and figuring out who's got time and what's coming up and tracks all of that for us. So he has taken on additional responsibilities and he's currently maxed out on his pay scale. And so we're trying to find a way to retain this young man and keep him working for our judges.
So he's an Attorney Two?
He's, we only have a staff attorney classification for District Court.
And you're asking for a new type of classification?
We are. We're asking to create a senior staff attorney classification, which would be comparable to an Attorney Two in the other departments here in the county. That's what we are requesting to start that process, to create that classification and a new pay scale for that new position. But it wouldn't, we're not asking to add a position at this time, just create another step for our staff attorneys. Amanda did some research before she left her role and started gathering some information from other counties. Douglas County has a senior staff attorney there that's paid over a hundred-and-four thousand a year. Sarpy County is paying their staff attorney over ninety thousand a year. So we are below what other staff attorneys are paying and way below what an Attorney Two is making in other departments here. So that's the, the reason for our request. Do you?
Yeah. I know from the history that we've all had, we want to keep good employees and it is to all, all of our benefit to do that. And I think that it is incumbent upon us to look at this very carefully. These, our staff attorneys do yeoman's work and really help us not be clamoring for another judge, which you know the price tag of that and where that goes. But they, they really do benefit all of us in making sure that we can handle the load. And, you know, I won't get into the weeds too far, but you know, when you talk about the county attorney's office, the public defender's office, which is a fraction of the work that we do, because we have all those other things that we do, they've all added staff, they've all added attorneys, they've all added all of those things in here. I've been on the bench now eighteen years here and we have added no staff in the District Court. We've reconfigured a couple, but we've added none. And we are, I will tell you, maxed the gills. So we want to use the people that we have as wisely as we can without coming and adding, but the load is, the load is big.
It sounds like this reclassification is appropriate. I, but you said he's taken on additional duties. Is that, has someone else relinquished those duties or is this because the need?
The need.
And he saw the need and fills the void.
The need, and it's filling a void right now. Yeah.
Absolutely.
I was getting kind of frustrated with this about, I mean, is, is this, these positions just don't feel like county employees. They feel like, like, it, I don't deny that this individual should have this increase or that it should, but should, why shouldn't the judiciary be paying for this?
Well, I think the statute requires that you, as a board.
No, I'm picking the fight, I'm picking the fight with the statute.
I understand that. I'm just saying what the statute says is that you have, you, you have to give us the resources.
I fix fights with statute every day.
I know.
This is what I do.
I totally, I totally get that. You know, it's, Douglas County pays for, my goodness, you know, we.
Yeah, Douglas County's wrong all the time, yeah.
Let's not, let's not get into what their budget is for all of their ancillary things. But, but, and, and I will tell you that there are some staff attorneys that are funded by the administrative office of the courts for rural coun, rural counties, but they handle, you know, essentially all but Lancaster, Sarpy and Douglas County work. But they can't handle us either.
Let me just be clear with the ask. The ask is create a new classification and then to reassign this person right now?
We, we would be asking to move him into the next classification.
Just give me an idea, like, how much are we talking about here? Is this ten thousand, is this two thousand, is it a year, like?
I don't, Nicole, do we even know on that?
No, this, if they want to link it to the Attorney Two, then, you know, they would have, the board, but it's not the salary.
Let's, can we come back on this one when we do the, the Clerk of the District Court and try to get some more numbers and figure out what it, what it would actually call? I, I don't want to approve something if I don't know what it's going to be.
It, I mean, generally what you're saying makes sense.
Yeah.
To, to put it into similar classifications that we're using in other departments makes a lot of sense and probably should have, should it be done, should have been done. It just would be helpful to me to know a little bit more clear on some of those numbers. So I'm not saying no. I don't think any of us are saying no, but let's, let's, let us just figure out a little bit more of those exact details.
I'm saying I think the judiciary should pay for it.
Well, that's true. You did say that.
We did hear that.
But I definitely think it's.
But, yeah, I'm favorable to doing this, but we.
I'm not fighting the person getting an upgrade, so. Um, let's just, let's try to get some numbers together and we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it when we also talk about the Clerk of the District Court and we'll do that shortly.
Couple.
Couple of weeks.
Very good. Thank you very much. Yeah, that's all I have.
Good enough. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up.
We'll have, we'll have Terry come up.
Okay. He had a really short one, I think.
Which page, seventeen?
I'll wait for my heavy hitters here.
I don't even see you on, on the additional appropriations.
On, on additional appropriations?
There's none.
There isn't any, so.
Well, then you're good.
It's everything else.
My dream list, right? Yeah, I think we're, what, we did the numbers today and we're a half a million.
What page is that?
Thirty-two.
Under.
Thirty-two.
And we do have an individual who may retire. He doesn't think he's going to in this fiscal year. And if he does, I think we'll be able to absorb that also. But at a minimum, we may have to come back for a very, very minimum amount. So that's where we are at that point in time.
And everything else is just what's coming down the pipe and what we're looking at?
Is this Public Information Officer not for this currently? Is that not for this year?
I'm going to, when, if it gets approved, I'm going to have to write the job description up and do a whole bunch more work. So that wouldn't take effect probably until next fiscal year to be able to hire them and get them on board at this point. But the city has one, so I'm going to do a little bit of stealing on the job description and things of that. But as, as you can know, at this point in time, our transparency is very much needed. We're doing a ton of social media and things on that. We go out to the public and then we have traditional media at this time. We'd be able to keep this individual very busy and we'd probably even add to them to help with the hiring that we're, as you know, having issues trying to get people out, because we are eight down right now.
And would that actually be an office, like, someone that has to be a trained officer?
No. It's going to, we have moved from having a sworn personnel to a civilian individual.
Okay.
Just because we can't, we can't fill the ranks of the sworn staff.
Well, that was one of my concerns.
Yeah, so we, we bantered back and forth. You want to have somebody that knows law enforcement to be able to speak intelligently about it, but it also, if it, you know, it has a negative effect on, on our sworn staff, we don't want that to happen either. So we're more than willing to go with a civilian and orientate them.
Well, and even the reverse is true. Someone who knows social media, knows marketing, knows that.
Yes.
Not necessarily an officer, sworn officer.
And it, it does help if they know our culture and how we work, but again, it can be taught on that. And there's plenty of people in these positions that were not sworn law enforcement and they do a great job.
And I think, I think this board tried to approve this position for you at the, at the last budget and you said, no, 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 give us, give us the IT.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. And we are working on that position too. Now, I don't know if you know this, but the SEJUS project may get extended out further. And so we're kind of looking at that. I don't want to have two people in that program and position too long, the overlap. And so we've kind of backed off on doing that position, just because I don't want to be paying for that. So we're holding off on that and that's the reason why we're kind of bringing this Public Information Officer up. But we're talking with IS, just saying, okay, where are we going to be? When is the best time to hire that position for the programmer? Because we do want them to be trained, because we will probably be running the new SEJUS before the whole project's done. So we'll need that person then. So then pay, I was just going to say this all makes sense to me. The pay increases, Record Supervisor, she is making, now she's not totally topped out, but she's making two dollars more than the topped-out record specialist. It is a twenty-four hour operation. She works a lot of overtime. She gets cold a lot at night, because again, it's a twenty-four hour operation. She does all the training and doing that. So we would like to move her up and and I think we talked about that to a C-ten, from a C-ten to a C-14. That's in the letter.
So the top ends about ten thousand higher?
Now, with our sergeants, a topped-out deputy, I believe, makes a little over ninety-one. And a topped-out sergeant is making, I think, a hundred-and-ten. And that's the, I mean, that's kind of the same positions, you know, she's doing, she, she supervises six individuals on that. So she does a great job and like I said, retaining people. We'd really like to keep her. And then the next one is Sarah's position and we would like to change that. Now, we can't find anything in different jobs that do that. Now, the county attorney's office has a position of Office Administrative Services Officer. That's what she is to Operator Manager, which is an E-20, and you can see the numbers on that. All we would have to do on that description is add the Sheriff's Office to that, because it says the Public County Attorney's Office. So.
And this would all come up in the next budget, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep. We have Sarah doing a ton more. She does our civilian hiring at this point. So she reviews them when they initially come in. She does all the phone interviews. She sits on the panel with those. She has been doing our social media and has done a great job on that part. As you, I don't know if you watch, but we do Facebook Live, all our briefings at this point in time, so that we can get our word out. And she has been a big part of that process and she does a ton of our social media. And she's not a cop and she does a great job like that too. So that's why we're asking that. Any questions?
Mr. Vest.
I have a question that keeps going through my mind every time. Do these have to go through HR before we approve them or do they come? Do we involve them?
Yes.
They would all go through HR? So we would give the nod to send it to HR for evaluation and a report back to us?
Correct.
That's what I was remembering the process.
We just wanted to give you the heads up that we're looking at doing this in the next budget cycle.
Okay.
I'm good. Okay. The radio system and the sinking fund, we have found out that our portable radios are not going to be serviced here in the very near future and some of the parts that Motorola will not be making anymore. We do have spares and we can do some fixing, but it's going to be changing here.
Right.
Very soon. So I wanted to give you guys heads up that we're going to have, be having to do that here in the very, very near future. The SEJUS upgrade, you know about already and doing that, that project. The training facility, as we have talked about, we are looking, Sarah has found a place that can assist us with some grants and so we're going to be starting to work on that and seeing what kind of funds we can do that. I'm even willing to put in more FAC money into that, but kind of asking if we go along and do this, if the county be willing to throw some money our way to get this project done. I'm convinced we're going to have to do it in portions and kind of build as we, as funds come in. So I know we have talked to you guys in the past about those and the ideas on that. I would like to get started on this project, because once we get started, it would, I think that it would flow through. Storage facility, I don't know.
Real quick, I'm not, I, maybe you talked about this last year and I just missed it, but on that firearm, like, why is it that expensive?
The.
Like thirteen million, right?
It's a huge, oh, that, the, the training facility, there's classrooms, there's going to be a mat room, there's going to be a SIM room, there's going to be a room where you can do close combat training and all that with sim munitions and all that, so.
Have you done the presentation on that since Mr. Schulte came on the board?
That's the first I've heard of it, so.
I, I will, yes.
Probably, we probably did it like the fall before he came on.
That may have been true, yes.
So it's, yeah.
I have some, a whole information thing I.
Oh, it's inexperienced to go through.
Why don't we, why don't you reach out to me then sometime, Banner, Terry, and we'll.
Yeah. And I got an email. Clark Anderson is the one who's working with us on that and so, and they've got a whole presentation on that so that you can sit there and kind of digest it and what, what I'm talking about.
We're, we're a little short on time here. We still have to get through the assessor's office, because there's another group that has this room at noon. Was there anything else that, I mean, the have-tos?
The upgrade of the body cameras.
Yeah.
And the in-car cameras and the tasers. Right now, we own all our tasers, but there's no warranty and they are older. The body cameras, they're out of warranty come in April. We go, look, Motorola bought WatchGuard and we are having a lot of problems. We had to send back three already, brand-new ones. And so we are looking to go to Axon. And as you can see what the cost is over the five years, I'm asking for two-hundred-thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars to do this. It's going to do our resource space is going to change, the evidence.com is such a big improvement on that. LPD's gone to that. The county attorney's able to access it. So we'd all be on the same language in doing that. So we're going to be, our hands are going to be tied here pretty quick on having to do something and do this.
Okay, the, the one thing that I would just throw out to you guys is be ready to prioritize.
Yep.
Great.
I mean, because we don't know what the legislature is going to do. We know they're coming. So I just want to make sure everybody understands. Love the items.
It's kind of like last year when we, we went to PIO in favor of what's, what's most important.
Yeah, we'll just have to, when we move into the next budget, we'll talk prioritization.
I just, these are things that are on our wish list and goals and the, and I just wanted, hey, here, here's what we're thinking we'd like, we'd like to do as we go along. And some of these, like you said, the SEJUS project, we're more than willing to fund it. Our main level reconstruction, the Public Building Commission is paying a little bit on that and thankfully, but we're flipping the big bill on that with our SEJUS, our forfeited funds too, so. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Sarah?
Thanks.
County Assessors? What's the page we're going to?
Um, I'm looking here, I'm looking, five. Okay, so, um, current year, looks like everything's, everything's good, so let's, let's talk about, well, you got like, three items on your future?
Future, yes.
Yes, okay.
Cars, automobiles are all, a lot of these are purchased at about the same time, and we need to start phasing in some replacements, it's a function of age more, you know, uh, so rather than getting to an emergency situation, we'd rather like to be proactive and do this over a couple of years. Our field software, uh, we're running into some problems with that, and it's time to replace that, we're estimating about 103,000 dollars, we do that over a two-year period, we use that out in the field daily, and, um, there's some enhancements we would have with that, and then...
So Dan, is that, is that the same current software you're using that just needs to be upgraded, or do you gotta go out and find somebody new?
That, that's unknown at this point, we, we looked at a, a different product last summer, that, that, everything has to work together, so I don't have a, an answer on that.
Okay, okay.
And then, uh, lastly, we need to look at adding a, an appraiser, uh, one, as the county continues to grow with more parcels and so forth, we need to have...
It's a clear need, I'm in, I'm in support of that.
Commercial side, yeah.
And then I was remiss, I didn't include in our letter that we had been working for the last year with the HR department, um, when we started in the office, there were a number of positions that their classification description hadn't been reviewed in a decade or decades, and some of those are on our GIS team, um, so, yeah, we, we are still kinda working through that, and we would like to possibly schedule a presentation with our GIS manager, kinda what the GIS department does, how it interacts with all the other, uh, agencies, the work that it's doing for the other county agencies, um, maybe at a staff meeting in the next few weeks, kinda once we get our ducks in a row, but just kinda, so you can kinda see what we've been proposing and working on with regard to those positions, so, yeah, other than that, pretty much business as usual. Any questions about anything?
Nope.
Always over a barrel on those hardware and software updates and things we do.
The other thing too, Dennis, on the tech fund side, I know our revenues are a little down there, um, and we had talked last year kinda about how to budget for that, 'cause it's, you just never know where interest rates are, and where, you know, sales are, where to come in with that number, but you did mention that there's maybe some funds set aside that could help cover this year's expenses, if we are short in the tech fund, 'cause we do have, um, various bills coming out of that pot of money.
I mean, there's, there's a running balance to that thing, so...
But we may want to, or, you know, there could be the possibility down the road where our expenditures are more than our collections, and we may have to then, um, subsidize some of the costs of, you know, computer technology, or whatever it is, with the general fund dollars.
Um, I'll, I'll update that, uh, running balance, and I'll shoot it to you guys.
Fabulous, thank you.
That'd be great.
Yeah, that way you got it.
Yeah, thanks.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll break for lunch, right?
Yeah.
And we need to vacate.
Yeah, I'm stuck here.